Z, did you start the recording?
Hi. Good evening. If you didn't catch that, welcome to the May meeting of the Niskuna zoning board of appeals. We have a full calendar this evening. Before we start, Ms. Kenny, will you call the role, please?
Here.
Mr. Dolman?
Here.
Mr. Daly?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Here.
Chairperson Hope?
Here. The first matter, I'd just like to have everybody aware that we are a seven-person board. And as you can see this evening, we only have six persons. Obviously, we have the, I don't know if it's obvious. We also have the town attorney with us, and she is not a member of the board, so she doesn't vote. Because we only have six or seven members at the, when your matter is called, I'm going to ask each one of you, and hopefully I remember. I sometimes forget this. I'm going to ask each one of you whether you wish to proceed tonight, because you can have the option to adjourn the matter to the next meeting, when hopefully we'll have seven members of the board, or you can choose to move forward this evening. The difference is you have to get, even though there's only six of us, you need to get four affirmative votes to have your application approved. Okay, so the odds are a little different. If you have seven people up here, you have seven, four of seven versus four of six. So with that understanding, Ms. Kenny, will you call the first matter, please?
Appeal by AJ Sign Company, agent for variance from section IF and section 220-222 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 2690 Balltown Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the IR research and development zoning district, to install signs exceeding the number and size allowed. Schedule IR Research and Development's column seven permitted signs. Also, C-section 220-222 states, "For each linear foot of building frontage, one square foot of sign area shall be permitted. Such signs shall only be attached to the building face and shall not protrude more than one foot from the building face and shall be a singles face sign. Under no circumstances shall any one sign exceed 50 square feet or more than one facade, 50 square feet, and no more than one facade sign shall be permitted per property. For sites of five acres or more, one freestanding monument ground sign is permitted. The freestanding monument sign shall not be greater than eight feet in height above the finished grade. Such signs shall have a maximum area of 30 square feet at the primary driveway. It shall be set back a minimum of 10 feet from the right-of-way line and side property line and be located in a manner that does not interfere with the required minimum site distance at driveways or intersections. Such sign shall be constructed of materials complementary to the principal building and shall be externally lit. Content of each sign shall be limited to identification of one place or one business. Double signs, double face signs are permitted. The property at 2690 Balltown Road is approximately 195 acres in area. As proposed, the Balltown Road entrance sign, a freestanding monument sign, is internally lit, not externally lit. Therefore, a variance for the internally lit freestanding monument sign is required. Building one, the building one, the new DAC building has frontage that is greater than 50 square feet. Therefore, one facade sign not exceeding 50 square feet is allowed on the property. As proposed, there would be six facade signs on the property. Therefore, variances for five additional facade signs and variances for 493.9 square feet of additional sign area is required. Thirty-nine notices were mailed, zero responses, and the planning board put in a recommendation.
Oh, on May 19th, 2025, the planning board voted to affirm the following recommendation. Effect on the comprehensive plan, the planning board voted 7-0 that the proposed variances would have no effect on the comprehensive plan. They noted that this property was a standalone campus set well back from the road. They could not see the signage from the road or from nearby homes. They noted it fit the general character of the IR Research and Development zoning district. The board notes this is a reasonable expansion of an existing research and development site that serves to further solidify the entity as an economic stronghold in the community and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Suitability of use, the board voted 7-0 that the proposed era variances were suitable as proposed. They noted the variances would have no negative impact on the neighboring properties and help, and would help to safely navigate guests about the campus. The primary function of the signage was for wayfinding and building identification. While variances are needed, the size and number of signs is reasonable, given the campus size, square footage of the building, and the mixes of uses there. The signs are large but do not appear overly large, given the size of the buildings. Because a major function of the campus is to bring guests to showcase technology and discuss partnerships, the board noted it makes sense to have easy-to-find and easy-to-read identification on each of the buildings. The board voted 7-0 to recommend the ZBA approve all of the variances. They noted that, given the unique circumstances of this parcel, its location, that it was set way back from the road and away from neighborhoods, the signage package strikes the right balance of form and function. It will ensure safe navigation of the area for GE Vernova guests.
Thank you. Before we start, sir, I just have a question for Laura. Laura, can you just let me know the logic behind why internally lit signs or externally lit signs are preferred over internally lit signs?
In the code? I'm actually not sure.
I'm just trying to figure out the logic behind it, that's all.
Um, it's definitely in a variety of zoning districts. I think it was originally assumed to be less intrusive than internally lit. I think it really hasn't changed that much since the 70s or 80s, the signage code itself. And so I think back then it was an LED-lit. It was lit inside with like neon. So that was discouraged, and the external lighting was to help signs be more in conformance with like a neighborhood character.
Thank you. Sir, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yep, my name is Tom Wheeler with AJ Sign Company, Bay 42 Saratoga Road, Burn Hill.
Tom, we just heard the planning board's recommendation. I think they analyzed a lot of the questions we would typically ask you. I just, before, and I'll let you say whatever you'd like, can you just briefly tell us first about the freestanding sign and the need for the size of it? I understand there's a large campus, and I understand with respect to signs, B through H, B through H, they're set back, well set back from the road and likely won't be seen from the road, correct?
Correct. Nothing's in the road except for this freestanding.
No, the freestanding one is the one I was concentrating on. And can you tell me why it has to be? First of all, how large is that sign?
It's 53 inches tall but 80 inches wide. It's actually, the existing freestanding sign is going to be refaced.
Okay, so the existing is the same existing sign then?
Existing sign, refaced, and we're going to do push-through lettering, so it's internally illuminated with LEDs. We take an aluminum face, cut the letters out, push-through acrylic, has opaque vinyl on the face. So the lighting is actually just a soft glow around the return of the letter, about a half an inch of acrylic where light comes out. Touching on what she was talking about with the code, people think internally lit, they think a big huge piece of polycarbon where the whole thing lights up and it's bright. It used to be lit with fluorescent bulbs, which have a far throw, so it was, you know, brightened through light far. Now with LEDs, they have a short throw, and modern technologies, you know, CNC machines has allowed us to do this type of push-through, where the lighting is so minimal, it's much less than you would ever have with a floodlight. Floodlights, you know, they can get hit and jarred before you know it, the floodlights ain't even ready to traffic, so.
So just for clarification purposes, this, the size of the freestanding monument sign that's the same sign that's been there, just being changed, it was internally lit previously?
I believe it's lit with floodlights. You can see in the picture, there's a floodlight there. So we're going to retrofit it to be internally lit.
Okay. And then just briefly, can you explain why we can't? Or do you have any, is there any thought process to potentially consolidating any of the other signs? So you reduce the need for them in terms of the number of signs?
The other signs as in B through?
Yeah, B through H.
I can walk you through from the, from Balltown Road in. So Balltown, at Balltown Road, we have the existing monument. That's going to be your directional aid to know that's where GE Vernova is, turn in. Then you're going to go up the road a bit, and you're going to come to the guard shack. So we want to put, obviously, the name on the guard shack so you know what this little building is, what it's for. Pretty simple sign, again halo lit, so their channel letters, aluminum face, aluminum returns, stood off about an inch. You get a soft glow out the back of the letter, so very soft lighting. Once you're past the guard shack and they let you go, you go to the big building. So this building is absolutely massive. The sign that you see looks like a lot on paper, but on the building, it's not going to look big at all. It's actually about 50 feet in the air. Again, halo lit, so soft glow around the letters, not visible from Balltown Road. So it's going to identify what this building is. From there, there's a welcome center. So you can, the welcome center is a front-back, obviously. So if you pull up to the front, you get out of your car and you're walking, this 50-foot sign, we just, you know, 50-foot high sign you just talked about, you're not going to see because you're on, you're on foot. So this GE Vernova sign identifies the welcome center from the front or the back. So depending on where you park, you'll know that that is the welcome center for GE Vernova. You go in, do your thing, and then there's also going to be names to the building. We don't know what the name is yet. You know, it'll be named after somebody or have some fancy GE name. So again, wayfinding, you're going to the GE Vernova campus, but you're going to the Jones Building, say. So we use a filler here, some letters and a size that we're hoping they can make work just for the naming of the buildings. Again, this is really all wayfinding. When you get out of your car, this whole thing is massive. So you want to be able to find where you're going. You're here to see what GE's doing.
All right. Thank you, sir. You've answered all of my questions. Are there any other members of the board that have any questions?
I do. What's the what is on the LED? How bright is that sign going to be?
Which sign you're referring to?
Are you talking about the freestanding monuments?
Not bright at all, because again, you have an aluminum face. The letters are punched out, so now you have acrylic push-through. It's three-quarter inch acrylic. It's got opaque vinyl on the face, so nothing comes out the face of the letter. It only comes out the return, just the edge.
Why does it have to be that big?
So we could reuse what's there. It's an effective size for cars going to up and down Balltown Road. We want it to be seen so people can see it and make the turn safely. You know, you don't want people to have their eyes off the road too long for a sign. You want to have it so they can look, see it, and do what they got to do.
I don't see a safety factor involved with that.
Well, if a sign's too small, you're taking your eyes off the road for longer to try to read it. And your viewing distance is going to be less, so now you're slamming on your brakes to turn in. So you want to make it so people, when they're approaching, can see it from far enough away, they can slow down and safely make the turn in. The GE logo and the wording is not big. You know, put a two, two-and-a-half-foot snowstorm on this. The snow's approaching the words on the sign, so it's definitely not a, not a big sign by any means.
And Mr. Wheeler, my understanding from what you've previously indicated was, this is the existing sign. This isn't an enlargement of the existing sign. This is the sign that's currently in place. Is that correct?
Yep.
The sign does not require a variance, and it never has. It's compliant. The size is compliant.
Okay.
The variance on this is just regarding the lighting, which honestly, this is going to be softer lighting than if you had floodlights on it.
Are there any other questions?
I just have two questions regarding the the names on the sign. Are there any other organizations on this site?
Uh, no, this is just GE.
Okay. And then the second question is, can you clarify which signs are would be considered placeholder for future sign or future signage?
Yep, it's H in your packet, where it says future GE Vernova building name.
And that's the only one?
There's two of those. And you can see in the drawing, done by the architect, there's red on the far right and red on the left near the white car. That's where they would go. Those are the only ones that are, we're unsure what they're going to say.
I'm sorry, can you, can you just say that? Okay. Oh, okay. On the last page?
Yep.
I see building names one and two. Barely, but yeah, I do now. So that would have signage that indicates the building name. That's one. And where's the other one?
Uh, there's one by the white car, and there's one to the far right.
There we go.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Sorry, they're hard to see.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just a quick question confirming. I know this is said, and I want to make sure it's confirmed. So the five additional signs, they are on the interior. So basically, they're not going to affect anybody outside the campus.
You can't see them until you're down that windy road. You can't really even see the building from Balltown Road.
So basically, when somebody accesses the area through security, and they're driving down, they park, they're going to walk to walk where the place is, that will demonstrate and make it easy for people to find it.
Exactly. Yep, so you know which, which building or which part of the building you're going to.
So again, it does not affect anybody in the neighborhood or anybody, just all internal.
Correct. Nobody's going to know they're there unless they go in there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any member of the audience have any questions relative to this application? Having heard none, is there anyone on the board who wishes to make a motion either for or against this application?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would move to approve the, I do move, to approve the application for variance as written.
Both variances?
I guess all of the variances as written. I don't believe the benefit can be achieved by other means, as the primary purpose of the signs is wayfinding on a large campus. Include, that's going to be expanded. Thank you. So I don't know how else you makes, find your way around a large campus other than the signs. Undesirable change in the neighborhood? No. It actually sounds like the news, the only sign that the larger neighborhood will be able to see, it sounds like it's going to be a little bit nicer. This is absolutely a substantial request, based both on the number and size, square footage variance. I don't see any reason to think that this is an, has an environmental impact. And while this is self-created, that is not necessarily determinative. So on the balance, I move to approve all variances as written.
Uh, motions been made. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
A motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Kenny, we call the role, please.
Mr. Latif?
I'm going to vote yes for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Stein?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated. Your variances have been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice presentation.
Ms. Kenny, we call the next matter, please.
Appeal by Kyle Wallman for a variance from section 220-18A3 and section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 845 Oregon Ave, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density zoning district, to construct a detached garage exceeding the height allowed and partially within the side yard setback. Section 220-18A3 states, "Unless otherwise specified, accessory structure shall not exceed 15 feet in height." The submitted plans indicate that a consistent wall height of 15 feet on all four elevations, with the structure reaching a peak height of 17 and 1/2 feet. Therefore, a height variance of 2 and 1/2 feet is required. Section 220-13 Schedule IC requires a minimum side yard setback of 15 feet for any structure measuring 120 square feet or more. The proposed one-foot side yard setback does not meet this minimum requirement. Therefore, 14-foot side yard setback variance is required. Ten notices were mailed, zero responses.
Laura, can you pull this up on Google Maps, please? Sir, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yep, my name is Kyle Wallman, 845 Oregon Avenue.
Kyle, and I didn't ask, and I said before we got going that I would ask before every application.
Yeah, I'll move forward.
You're going to move forward tonight. Okay. Kyle, I understand from your application that you're seeking to replace a garage that you're indicating is dilapidated, correct?
Yes.
And you're going to replace that with a slightly larger garage over, substantially over where the existing garage is located, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that existing garage already is one foot from the property line?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're also going to be making the garage substantially taller than it currently is, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So why, why don't you tell us why? I would consider your remarks, at least from my perspective, on why you need the, the the taller garage, why you need the height variance?
Yep.
So why don't you tell us a little bit about that?
Uh, yeah, we're going to make a 20-by-20 garage, which is enough to fit two cars. So our goal is to be able to fit two cars in there, but obviously with like kids' stuff and everything, lawnmower or whatever, it's like hard to fit every, you know, fitting two cars in with stuff doesn't really work. So we were hoping to put in a lot above it to like store stuff, you know, when we're not using it. So we'd have space for both cars in the garage, like in the winter and that kind of thing.
Okay, and so you said you need, you have a lawnmower, two cars. What other stuff do you need to put in there?
Oh, we got all sorts of like kids' bikes and water table, sand table. Yeah, I have little kids, so there's all sorts of stuff.
Okay, have you, have you explored any other options for, do you have any, is there a shed on the property or any others?
Uh, there's not. It's a, it's a small lot. We don't like, there's not a good spot to put some, another building, and we wouldn't, like, we have a lot of, it's wet, and our yard is lower than the neighbors' yards on either side. So the smaller we make a building, the more drainage opportunity we have. So we wouldn't want to make it more footprint, like make the garage larger or put another building in, because it's just more water to soak in, less ground.
Okay, and I can see from the picture that the existing garage, it looks like the property slopes downward somewhat. So do you know where the eve of the building is going to be in relation to your main structure there?
When you say eve, you mean, you mean the?
The roof. Where is it going to come up to?
Oh, on the house. Sorry, I didn't, I have, can I email you a picture? Okay. Sorry, I should have done this ahead of time. What's your email? Okay, it has a JPEG in there, but I have a picture of what I think that's going to look like. But basically, the existing garage is about 11 and 1/2 feet tall, and so it's, it's going to be about 50% taller than what that is right now.
Okay. And with respect to your neighbor to the left of the garage, have you spoken with that neighbor?
Yeah, it's Bob. He's right there, yeah.
It is. I, I assume Bob's in support?
Yeah, unless he changed his mind, yeah. We'll see.
But your understanding is, sir, you just wait, because well, I have you come up to the microphone, okay? So, all right, we'll let, we'll let, no, wait, just wait for a second, then we'll let you speak. All right. Have you spoken to any other neighbors about, have a behind you?
I have not talked to my neighbors behind.
Okay.
But it's, yeah, they have a pretty big backyard. It's not too close to their yard, but I have not, I did not speak with them about it.
Okay.
But on both, like, I've spoken with neighbors on both sides and across the street, I mean, like the adjacent neighbors on our street.
Okay. Before we get to your, that we get to your neighbor, is there any members of the board that have questions for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
The, your current garage, is this the same footprint as the current garage that's there?
Uh, the current garage is 19 by 19. This would be 20 by 20. And that's just kind of the minimum size to get two cars in. And we would not, it would be moving closer to the road, so it wouldn't get closer to our neighbors in the backyard. It wouldn't get any closer to Bob's yard from where it is now.
So wouldn't be closer to the property than the existing structure, just to clarify that?
Correct.
That's my other question. Thank you.
Mr. Latif?
Okay, just, yes, actually, the question of the size, 19 by 19. Your setback is how long from your neighbor's property? One foot?
Yeah.
So there's any way that, since you're rebuilding this, that you can make it like five feet setback from the neighbor? Or did you look in to do something like this?
Yeah, our yard's not very wide, so if we did that, it would, right, it would start in, being like in the middle of our backyard. So it would kind of eat into our usability of our backyard. Yeah.
Chairman Hope asked you the question about, so the neighbor behind you, is he affected right now by any water from the existing garage? There's any, any issues with water to your neighbor?
Yeah, so our neighbor behind us and our yard are the lowest. Like on either side of us, it's a little bit higher. And so our backyards get wet in the spring. And there's actually a storm drain in their back, in like their edge of their yard in their backyard. But yeah, they get, they get wet in the, in the spring, and then they'll like, it's like not too, it's, it'll start drying out in the next, you know, by the end of June, it'll be dry.
Okay. With the roof, to make it easier? The backyard or most?
Uh, no, there's not really anywhere to send the water. All the water goes into, like, we can't, it, our yard's the lowest spot, so it's all going to go there.
So you're indicating that the property behind you slopes up from your backyard, correct? Going straight back to your neighbor behind you, it's going to slope off, not?
Uh, our neighbor behind us, their yard is roughly the same elevation as the back of our yard. Our yard does slope downwards a little bit, so like, you can see the, where the garage is, it's pretty much flat from there. And then their yard is, probably slopes down a little bit from their house, but it's relatively flat.
Trees behind the garage, are they going to mask where the new garage is going? Are you thinking about removing any of those trees?
Uh, we want to keep the trees as long as possible. So, no. I mean, I think for the most part, like, at least half of the garage, they really don't see, because the trees are in the way. Honestly, we would like to put more trees in our backyard, so I imagine in some point in the future, like, it would be pretty not visible. But yeah, so I mean, they can, they can probably see about half the garage now, so probably comparable.
Okay. Is there any other members of the board that have any questions?
Looking at the lot. This would be your neighbor's side, right?
Uh, yeah, the far behind, like, farther behind. Uh, we don't have a, I mean, I would talk to Bob about that, and if he didn't want them, we wouldn't put them in.
Would be parallel to his?
Roughly. I think they might be a little bit lower, but close, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they'd be, they'd be pretty close to that height. I mean, I guess they might be, but I, we don't, we didn't have, we don't have like a specific plan for where all the windows would go, but I would be happy to not put windows on that wall if that was problematic. I think we would just not put windows on that side. Oh, yeah, yeah. We probably won't put windows on that side anyway. Yeah, it'd just be to like have some light in there, right? It's, we're not like spending lots of time in there. So yeah, I'm not, I mean, I would, yeah, I'm not tied to any window situation. Yeah, and we would be happy to not put windows on that wall, period. Yeah.
Sir, the image is up there, the garage opening, that's going to be facing the street, correct?
Yeah.
Right, so those two windows, they're Right, so those two windows that are shown on that, they would be facing the street, not your neighbor's?
That is correct, yes.
All right, do you have a question?
Just a quick question. You, you're asking for a two and a half foot height variance? And this is primarily gonna be used for storage? What ex? Why do you need that extra two and a half feet for a garage loft?
I, but like taller stuff in there, like bikes and skis, or like a skis, it would just, it would be helpful. I think in particular, like bikes and then just, then no one's hitting their head on stuff.
So there's a very specific benefit you're trying to achieve there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I've just got a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Wallen. Any intent on converting that space to living space in the future?
No. And to be clear, it's, would be extremely expensive, yeah, no, that's not, not, it will not be set up for that.
And then to, and then to our, maybe to Laura, would this require, if that were to be converted to living space, would that require approval by the, the planning board or some type of approval?
It would require approval by you as a use variance, because you're only allowed one single principal, single family dwelling. And so if this was converted into the living space, it would be two family, which isn't allowed in the zoning. So it would be illegal unless they got a use variance.
Until you use variance, okay, as long as there's some apparatus in place for that, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Are there any members of the public that wish to be heard for or against this application? Sarah, do you want to come forward?
Can I, can I say one, one thing? I think like the, the height becomes less of an issue just because our yard, our backyard is, like, it's pretty far setback from the road and it's, our yard is notably lower than our neighbor's yards, that kind of like makes it seem, seem not so bad.
Understood, okay, Mr. Wallen, do you want to let, Bob, I don't know Bob's last name. Sir, do you, you want to speak, do you just state your name and address for the record?
Bob Long, eight thirty-three Oregon Avenue. I live in the brick house which you see there, and everything that Kyle has said about this is true. The existing side variance has been there for probably since the garage was built and it's as old as the house is. My house was built in nineteen sixty and this variance was established at least that early. It has not been a problem to me and I don't see the heights or the size or the position of this building being a difficulty. I would see moving the building farther into the more central in his backyard being difficult because the driveway is so close to the one side. Not only is the yard probably only forty, forty-five feet, it's not very wide, but it also would make it difficult to maneuver to get in a second car in the garage. If you're going to move it anywhere, it would have to be moved over almost to the house on the next side, which would get into different kind of variance difficulties. The water's always been a problem there. The house behind it belonged to Ed Riley years ago. He, he had the water system in the backyard put in to take care of that, which was a drainage problem from the old creek that still is there. I have no difficulty with this, living with no different circumstances except the height from what we're living with now. And I hope we have good neighbors like the Wallens for a long time.
Mr. Long, am I mistaken, or were you at the last board meeting?
I was, the other side of the house.
Right, we have a lot of code enforcement activity.
A year ago, it was across the street.
I don't, I don't have any further questions for Mr. Long, does any members of the board have any questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to be heard on this application? Having heard no other neighbors or members of the community wish to be heard, is there any members of the board that wish to make a motion for or against this application?
I'll go ahead and make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to approve the variance as requested. I find that the benefit cannot be achieved by other means. The lot doesn't really lend itself to an additional accessory structure to increase the storage space. And the proposed variance is probably the least intrusive way for them to gain the benefit of having a two-car garage. I don't think that there's an undesirable change in the neighborhood and neither does the most affected neighbor, so I feel like that's good evidence. I do find that this is absolutely substantial. Yes, both the height and the setback variance are very substantial. However, I would note that's mitigated by the fact that it's essentially ninety percent there already. There could be a possible environmental impact of this based on the drainage that's been discussed, but clearly the applicant is conscious of the drainage concerns on the property. And so I find that to be mitigating, and yes, this is self-created. On the balance, I move to approve the variance as written.
And for clarification, you're referencing both variances, correct?
Yes, the, the application, I apologize.
Okay, motion's been made, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
A motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Having heard none, Mr. Kenny, we call a roll, please.
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna vote yes, and I wanna put on the record also that a different two-point-five feet, it's not gonna make a big difference in this case because the neighbor's property are probably two, three feet higher than the driveway to this applicant. And for all the reasons were stated, I'm voting yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Stein?
Yes, for the reasons stated, and I just want to note that because the existing property is there, I think, I feel, I'm speaking for myself, but I think most of the members of the board would agree. That is why you're, the setback would be approved as such, thank you.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hoak?
Yes, for the reasons stated, your variances have been approved. Good luck with the project.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Kenny, we call the next matter, please.
Peeled by Christina O'Donnell and Edward Merzick for a variance from section two twenty dash twenty-five B one A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskiuna as it applies to the property at ten sixty-one Mohawk Road, Niskiuna, New York, located in the R one low-density residential zoning district, to construct a fence in the side yard exceeding the height limit allowed. Fence section two twenty dash twenty-five B one A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As proposed, a six-foot high fence will be located in the side yard. Therefore, a two-foot fence height variance is required. Eight notices were mailed, zero responses.
Good evening, will you state your name and address for the record, please?
Edward Merzick, ten sixty-one Mohawk Road, and my wife Christina O'Donnell.
Good evening, I see your application is for a variance for a six-foot fence. It appears to be between, and just for clarification, we're talking about the area between the garage and the shed on that diagram there, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Can we just make sure they want to proceed with?
No, yeah, thank you.
Say what? Oh, yeah.
Again, I forgot to ask, okay, you're gonna go forward with the sixth person board this evening, okay? So getting back to my line of thought here, with the, the fence that we need the variance for is between the garage and the shed. It's, it exists currently, correct?
Correct, at the six-foot height, it exists since it was installed in two thousand and seven.
Okay, can you put up the photograph of the area? It was installed in two thousand and seven, you said?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, did you have a variance to have it installed in two thousand and seven?
It was, it was not, there was not a variance, it was approved at that time.
Like, can you clarify that?
I just have to talk, because we know that there was one that the building inspector approved in error. It didn't receive a variance, but the permit was issued. But we just have to double-check that that is the case.
Okay, okay. With respect to that photograph now, it appears from that photograph, and maybe it's just the angle of it, that a portion of the fence runs along the side of the garage, is that correct?
Right, it starts about two feet back from the front of the garage.
So the fence does not run straight across from the garage to the shed, correct?
No, it's, it is straight across, right?
Okay, but it's?
That's why it's set back a couple of feet, because the other building is?
So it runs from the front corner of the shed to a portion, two feet back?
About two feet back, right.
Okay, and why do we need a six-foot fence? Why can't we make it a four-foot fence there?
Well, two things, the fence is mainly there because of the swimming pool for security. And then the other reason is that it gives us some privacy in the pool area, because the pool is directly behind that fence. And basically, we just want to keep it the same size that it's been for all these years.
Could we move the fence to the rear corner of the garage? And I, I see that there's a door on the shed, that's why it is where it is, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna step up, if you just identify as one person speaking at a time and identify yourself if you like to speak. Okay, Mr. Merzick, the fence is currently made of wood, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Why are we taking it down?
It's in a dilapidated condition where we're having to patch it up, trying to keep it upright and getting it to lock properly and?
And what, and it looks like we're gonna be replacing it with PVC?
Correct, yeah.
And what color PVC?
It'd be white, so it would match the buildings that we have.
Okay. All right, that is the extent of my questions, are there other members of the board that have questions?
Few questions. This fence exists right now and all you're doing is just replacing what's there with identical heights and everything, you're not adding?
Exactly, yeah, we just want to replace it the way it is, right?
Laura, question, Mother Nature takes that fence down, they can replace it without variance, right?
Yeah, so this is not the one that was issued in error. The permit that's attached was supposed to be fifty-four inches, so it got constructed at six feet and I'm not sure how that could be, but if Mother Nature took it down, no, without a variance, it could only be fifty-four inches high. And the reason it can be fifty-four is because it's a pool enclosure. Yeah.
Thank you, so if Mother Nature was to take that fence down and you need to rebuild it, you can build it at fifty-four inches. So have you looked at a different size of, because you haven't put it in, right? So it's still, you haven't replaced it, correct?
No.
Have you looked at other options or do you think still fifty-four inches will invade the privacy that you want?
I still think fifty-four inches would be a little bit low, probably for the privacy. If you see the picture, the roadway is a little bit above the level of the pool. So from the roadway, for example, you could see down into the pool.
From the, okay.
Correct, yeah.
And with the six feet you can't see?
No.
Extra height is provided?
It makes a big difference, yes.
And there's any way to keep that fence? You can paint it, you can do anything to, to make it survive or not?
I've?
What would be your option if this was to be not approved? Do you keep the fence that you have now?
We have plans to, we have, everything is set to replace it. We, we actually have the approval for the rest of the fence that's falling down that we need to replace. And this is, we wanted to say, get the approval so we can just replace what's the sizes there.
Mr. Hoak asked you this about moving the fence to the back. So where is that, in the picture we're looking at, where is that fence near the house? Is it to the front of the house or to the back of the house?
The doorway?
The fence.
It's to the front or the back? It comes from the, the garage is on the left there.
Okay.
And that's the side of the garage, it comes directly over to the front edge of the storage shed.
The first shed, right. So what's the distance do you, of that fence about?
You mean the length of it?
Yeah.
It's four, four sections of whatever they size there. Including, that includes the gate.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Merzick, I think Mr. Latif's kind of hitting on, you have multiple options here besides getting your variance granted. You could keep it at its current location and install a fifty-four-inch fence there without the need for variance. You could also construct a six-foot fence, but have the, the course going between the garage and the shed farther back, so it's behind the back corner of your house. And you could, then you would only, you, you could use it, you could, wouldn't need a variance for that either and still have a six-foot fence. So why is the, moving the fence farther back? I understand there's a door along a part of the shed, but why can't we move it even farther back? And then you wouldn't need any variance at all?
Well, the, the, this rough drawing of the pool is actually not accurate. The pool comes forward to just a few feet from the shed. Yeah, and this is a really old, that's not the same pool that is in there now, but it comes back quite a ways. And then if you put, and then there's a side door on the shed that we use, again, we use all the time to get in and out of there, that you would have to come through the fence to get to that side door.
Right, you would have to come through the fence to get to the side door of the shed?
Yes, every time you want, if you wanted to go into the shed from the pool, you'd have to come through the fence and?
Why would, why would you need to go into the shed from the pool?
Just to get something to?
That would?
Use to?
It's not like living space or any?
No, no. Storage.
And you would still have a gate there?
Right.
So why couldn't you move it on the other side of that door? Any other reason besides? Sure.
Aesthetically, it would, it would diminish the whole look of the house by moving it forward. And plus, there's a window in the garage, so where it's placed right now, the garage is kind of secured. There's a window and if it were out further, then it just leaves it open to somebody getting in the garage or getting into the shed where there's things that are located that you want to keep private and for the pool and for the house. You don't want a door to your, it's not just a shed, it's kind of a nice building where we keep a lot of nice things for the pool and it, it just, it just would ruin everything, it would ruin the whole look.
Okay.
And how you would use it, so it would diminish the value of my property. That's how I feel.
Course of action, how would you, what would you do?
I think we just would have to prop up the fence the way it is and paint it white and hope that it stays up. What else could we do? I mean, it just doesn't make any, it doesn't, doesn't make any sense. This is the way it's been for years and it's worked very nicely. And this is a hill, another thing is, is that there's an elevation element, like, can I point to this? Can I go over here?
Take the mic with you.
This window right here is a garage.
Talking to the microphone, either this one or this one? Because we do minutes?
Okay, I see, okay. Okay, I see. All right. Okay. Okay, just let me explain. This window here, there's the property, the, the ground comes up very high. So it kind of, behind this fence, it comes up and kind of, and then there's a a stone fence here and then it comes down and then over, and over here is the door to the shed, if you want to call it that. And then it comes down and then over, and over here is the door to the shed, if you want to call it that. So if you, if we were to move it in, it would really expose this, this, this would be an element of exposure as well as the door. So anybody could get in there and I don't think it's, I think, I think it's unsafe. You know, children, anybody. That's why this fence being so high is very nice that nobody from the road can see it's a pool. So it doesn't, it doesn't entice anybody to, you know, children, nobody knows it's there, and that's a good thing.
Okay. Are there other members of the board that have questions?
I've just got, um, one question from, what is the distance from the road to the fence? The approximate distance?
Oh. Quite a bit.
I don't know, I've never measured it. Maybe it's a hundred feet, I don't know, it's quite a ways.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I see a number of trees and shrubbery.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, then-
And those are existing today?
Yeah.
Which we agree all helps, uh, make it a little more private.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You just hand back.
Just adding to this question. So that fence is not visible if you're driving by, like, without stopping on the road? You can't see it?
Uh, it depends on which way you're going. I think if you're coming toward Route Seven, you might not see it. If you're coming, uh, toward Rosendale, uh, you would be easier for it to see. And we, we have a lot of people, uh, use Mohawk Road for biking and running and that kind of stuff. So, uh-
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for you. I do see on, on the, uh, the sheet, the pack that we got here, uh, the Bruce fence. I see there's a couple of check marks. Are you going for the six-foot fence or there's a five-foot fence? They both have check marks here, so I just want to make sure that you're, which one are you ordering?
Uh, six foot.
Okay. That answers my question, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard for or against this application? Having heard none, is there any member of the board that wishes to make a motion, uh, to approve or deny this application?
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I'm gonna make a motion. And as much as the applicant should know, it's very difficult for this board making, uh, approval for six-feet fence. But I'm gonna make the motion to have it approved and I'm gonna say why. My reason, first of all, this fence has been there. And, uh, we haven't had any complaint about the fence from anybody, the neighbors, even though in two thousand and seven, that fence was installed, was supposed to be, uh, fifty-four inches. It was installed at six feet and never came to our attention or any complaint. And usually, we get complaint from the neighbor and that's how we catch if somebody did something wrong on their properties. So, uh, to me, uh, the benefit is not gonna be any achieved by another way because the hill, the privacy that they need, they used to it for the past, uh, eighteen years, the way it is. It's not gonna, actually, it's gonna improve, uh, it's gonna make it more desirable for the neighborhood if you can see the fence from certain areas. Is it gonna cause any physical environment? Uh, it's not gonna cause any physical environment. It's a fence, it's been there. And, uh, is the difficulty self-created? I have to say, uh, it is, and the only reason I say it is because it was supposed to be fifty-four inches and, uh, it was installed, uh, six feet and now we're in to allow the six feet to remain there. So for all these reasons, uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Latif. Uh, motions been made. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
A motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Having heard no discussion, um, Mr. Kenny, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Stein?
I'm gonna vote yes for the reasons stated and note that, uh, this did pass inspection back in two thousand and eight. Uh, so that is also part of why I'm putting yes. Thank you.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hope?
Uh, I would be a, a no vote. I am a no vote on this, uh, application and I appreciate, um, what has been said by the applicant relative, um, uh, to their need for a six-foot fence. I do believe that there's an alternative, uh, reasonable alternative that will allow the applicant to achieve their ends um, with respect to, um, putting a fifty-four-inch fence directly where it's currently located. I find that the, the location of the fence is set back significantly far from the road that, um, the need for a six-foot fence i- is, for privacy purposes, isn't really there. I don't really think that you can even see back to that location very easily from the road. And for that reason, um, I, I don't believe that balancing the factors along with the fact that this was originally approved for a fifty-four-foot fence, um, at that location, not a sixty-foot fence, or seventy-two-inch fence. Um, and I believe that, um, in general, um, six-foot fences in the front yard, as expressed in the code, do have a detrimental impact, uh, on the community. Um, so for those reasons, I would be a no vote, but, uh, irrespective of what I say, um, you're, I, I would be, I am a no vote, but irrespective of what I say, uh, your, uh, variance has been approved. Um, variances, variance has been approved five to one. So, good luck. Mr. Kenny, we call the next matter.
Appeal by Ian Flack of Excellent Dex Agent for a variance from Section two twenty dash fifty-three A and Section two twenty dash fifty-three B of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at fourteen ninety Myron Street, Niskuna, New York, located in the R-two medium-density residential zoning district to construct a deck exceeding the, exceeding the change in usable floor area on a non-conforming property and partially within the rear yard setback. Section two twenty dash fifty-three A states a non-conforming building may be structurally altered as long as cumulative alterations do not add more than ten percent to the usable floor area of the said building or structure as it exists on July one, nineteen seventy-one, and when a valid zoning and building permit has been obtained. Such alteration shall not tend to increase the inherent nuisance, nor shall such alteration violate any provisions of this chapter regarding yards, lot area, or lot coverage for the district in which it is situated or increase any existing violation of such provision. As proposed, there is a twenty-one percent additional usable floor area. Therefore, an eleven percent usable floor area variance is required. Section two twenty dash fifty-three B allows a deck to a non-conforming residential structure, which brings the deck into a non-conforming side or rear yard no nearer to the side or rear property line than the existing structure and no nearer than half the distance specified in the particular residential zoning district. The residential, um, structure is nineteen point one feet from the rear property line. Therefore, seven feet, six inches becomes the minimum required setback. As proposed, the deck extends eleven point five feet from the rear of the home and seven point six feet from the property line. Therefore, the setback is compliant, but a variance to the closer than the existing structure is required. Twelve notices were mailed, one response.
I have no objections to the town of Niskuna approving a variance for a deck to be built at fourteen ninety Myron Street, Niskuna, New York. Emma Graham, two one zero two Knot Street, Niskuna, New York.
Thank you, sir. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Uh, Ian Flack, thirty-eight Woodside Drive, Burn Hills, New York, and, uh, we're gonna move forward.
Okay, Mr. Flack, before you do that, uh, Laura, can you explain the second variance? Uh, it's, it's a little confusing to me.
Um, because the-
Well, could you put up the, where the, the image where the, uh, deck is, but I know you, the Knot Street, um, view?
Yeah.
No, the, the Google Maps, I was looking for the Knot Street view and-
Actually having a hard time identifying it on Google, so you can tell me if I have-
You had it originally.
You have to go around the corner.
You just have to go around the corner, yeah.
Yeah.
Google. Yeah, that's good. Um, so can you explain the, the second var, uh, second variance?
Yeah, so the, most of the homes in the town of Niskuna actually fall into this, um, they are considered non-conforming structures, um, when they're on small lots. Um, usually, um, because they don't meet a number of the bulk zoning requirements in the R-two district and they were just built before that code. So when they get an addition that exceeds more than ten percent of the usable floor area, which is really just the usable area of the house, um, they trigger that non-conforming issue. It's mostly limited to Old Niskuna and like country club estates just because there are small lots that actually don't meet the R-two zoning requirements that were put over top of them in nineteen seventy-one. So when they do a certain amount of expansion, they trigger that, that ten percent rule.
Okay, so I guess the, the question I had though was with respect to the eleven point five feet for the rear of the home and it's seven, it, it's compliant in terms of the setback, but, um-
Oh, I was explaining the wrong one.
You were explaining the first one, the second.
Existing home and? Oh, yeah, that's an and issue. So, um, the actual setback for this is seven and a half feet, which the deck meets. But the code says that it can't be any closer than the existing building and no nearer than one-half the distance to the, um, lot line. So although it meets the setback, because it gets a special setback, um, because it's a non-conforming lot, it's still closer than the building. So that's actually not a, a footage measurement, it's just that it extends beyond the building.
Okay.
Not by any particular number of feet, it just goes farther in.
So, uh, Mr. Flack, just a couple of questions. That, we're looking, the deck is gonna be installed, uh, you're gonna be able to see it from Knot Street, correct?
Correct. There is a future plan to put a, a fence permit in, but that's not right now. But yes, it will be visible.
Okay, and the property line, does that run along where those arborvities currently are?
The arborvities are well onto, uh, Warren's property, so the homeowner's property.
I guess that's what was throwing me off, because it was like-
First time I visited, I was like, oh, there's no way we can put a deck here, but they are on her property. It was recently surveyed.
So we're gonna be taking all those arborvities out, correct?
We're only taking about three of them down, I believe. Of, there's, I think, twelve or sixteen of them there.
Okay, and the neighbor that, um, twenty-one twenty Knot Street is the-
The garage and house right-
To the left.
Yep.
Okay. Um, so how far out past those arborvities is the deck going to extend?
It goes to about the edge of the bush right now, like the left side of the bush. If, actually, I don't even think it's that far. I think it's about the center line of that bush.
The center line of that bush, okay. And it looks like, um, the, the, the ground slopes upwards a little bit towards twenty-one twenty Knot Street. Um, are you gonna be cutting into that, that grade there? I assume you will be to-
Uh, no, the deck is gonna be flush with the door height, so it's gonna be, we're not gonna change anything about the grade.
And there is no door currently there, correct?
There now is a door there, uh, where that window is above the AC unit.
Okay. All right, are there other people that have questions on the board?
Do you have any pictures of the design of the deck?
Um, I have pictures that will look very similar to it. I, I, we don't do renders. Um, but I have decks that look-
Is that, uh, what Mr. Robertson's showing, the blue there? Is that where the deck is gonna be?
Yes, approximately.
Okay, and, uh, I know you said something about it's gonna be even with the door.
Yes.
So, uh, for the deck, how high is it from the ground is it gonna be?
Probably about between sixteen and eighteen inches.
Sixteen, eighteen inches? Okay, and I heard you mentioning something about eventually some kind of fence?
She's, she's hoping to do a fence in the future for her dog. That I, I would imagine at a four-foot height, it will block most, if not all, of the deck.
Okay, and, um, if it's gonna be even with the door, so are they gonna walk right to the deck then? When they step out of the door?
When they, that's, that's part of the reason we went- Yeah, that's part of the reason we went with a deck instead of a patio. Um, she's aging parents, so low, your easy mobility in and out of the, of the, um, house, so there's no step between the deck.
There'll be no step?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are there any other members of the board that have questions? Was there any consideration of making the, uh, deck smaller, uh, to obviate the need for the, um, or to limit the need for the usable floor area variance?
Um, it, it, it needs to be that long to, um, fit all of the things you'd like to do, you know, that space is eaten up pretty quickly by a table and just a couple of chairs. Um, and since you can't go wider, um, you would have to do a patio or something like that. And like I said, we're trying to, uh, achieve easy mobility for the family and, um, as we know, patios can have issues in the Northeast.
Okay. Um, is there, having heard no members of the board that have any additional questions, are there any members of the public who wish to be heard for or against this application? Having heard, uh, no members of the public, is there any member of the board that wishes to make a motion, uh, relative to this application?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Dolman.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the application, uh, for variance as written. Uh, I don't find that the benefit can be achieved by other means. I know from personal experience how quickly deck space gets eaten up. Uh, I drive by this home every day, multiple times. I'm over on Dean Street. Um, and, uh, I have no reason to think that this would be an undesirable change in the neighborhood. There's rambling additions all over the neighborhood and, uh, this deck is relatively unobtrusive, uh, comparatively. Um, and I think that that's validated by the neighbor, also believing this is not a detriment to the neighborhood. Um, I do find that this is substantial. Uh, we're, we're talking about pretty substantial, uh, uh, variance that's being granted. I have no reason to believe there, there is gonna be an environmental impact and while this is self-created, that's not necessarily, uh, determinative. And I will say also that the, uh, benefit of helping our citizens age in place um, is also something that I would like to continue to see Niskuna be supportive of. For all these reasons, uh, I move to approve the application as written.
Thank you. Your motion's been made. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Kenny, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
And Chairperson Hope?
Yes, and I will say that it was nice to hear that any future fences will contemplate a four-foot fence.
That one's easy.
That was nice. Applicant had made that concession at the get-go here, so yes, thank you for all the reasons stated. But the application's been approved.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Kenny, we call the next matter, please.
Appeal by Peter Femenz for a variance from Section two twenty dash eighteen B three B, two twenty dash eighteen A three and Section two twenty dash thirteen Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at seven ninety-six Bayshakil Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R-one low-density residential zoning district to construct a detached garage exceeding the height allowed and partially within the side yard setback. Section two twenty dash eighteen B three B states- Section 220-18B3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building. Major accessory structures are defined as detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The proposed garage with an area of 1,200 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-18A3 states unless otherwise specified, accessory structures shall not exceed 15 feet in height. The submitted application indicates a structure height of 25 feet. Therefore, the proposed peak height exceeds the allowable limit of 15 feet, requiring a variance of 10 feet. Section 220-13 Schedule IB requires a 20-foot side yard setback. As proposed, the garage would be 10 feet from the side property line, therefore a 10-foot side yard setback variance is required. 11 notices were mailed, zero responses.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Can you state your name and address?
My name is Peter McClemmons, I live at 23 Mile Standish Road, Rotterdam, New York.
Uh, Mr. McClemmons, can you please, oh. Do you wish to proceed tonight with the six-member board?
I wish to proceed.
Okay, Mr. McClemmons, you indicated you're, do you own this property?
Yes, I own that property.
Okay, but you do not reside at the property?
Not yet, I intend to.
Okay, and when do you intend to reside there?
Hopefully shortly after I get the garage built, sir.
Okay, so your desire to move there is contingent upon having the garage built, correct?
Correct, sir.
And what do you need the garage for?
Um, space. I currently don't have any garage on that property whatsoever. I'm a self-employed, small contractor. I do residential work. I also have a workshop which encompasses the entire basement of my current home, which I want to get out of the house for safety purposes, et cetera, and I would like to have the space to have that wood shop in part of that garage as well as the availability to get a trailer in and out of the garage as well as far as the height.
So what is, all right, so what is the name of your business?
Solid Construction.
Solid Construction?
518 LLC, yes.
And solid construction does what type of construction?
Mostly residential remodeling.
Okay, and I note that you have a garage with two, it looks like a garage, you need 10-foot high.
Doors.
Doors, and what are they accommodating?
A job trailer.
Okay, and how tall is the job trailer?
About nine plus with a ladder rack on it, so the 10-foot door is a necessity.
All right, and it looks like the structure itself is larger than just accommodating two vehicles, correct?
Correct, sir.
All right, so you indicated you want to have a workshop within the garage as well?
Yes, on the left-hand side of the building, if you're looking at it from where the door.
And what are you going to be doing at that workshop?
Uh, every once in a while, I have customers ask me to make a bar top or a small table, things like that, and I also have another small business called Rustic Wood Lamps, which I make lamps, small things.
Okay, and who is currently residing in the home? Is anybody residing in the?
No, currently it is uninhabited.
Okay.
I'm clearing out my mother's belongings. I purchased the estate from my mother, she passed away in March of last year.
Sorry to hear that.
Thank you.
So are you planning on moving into the house?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so you're.
I intend to spend the rest of my life there as long as I can maintain the property.
Okay. Laura, is there any concern relative to the intended use of the property?
Um, as long as the customers aren't coming and the trailers are just being stored in the garage for the day, it's not considered a home occupation, so that'd be okay. It would only be an issue if they were.
I would never want customers coming to my location.
Like he can't put a sign out or do, yeah, but he can do woodworking and have his trailers in his garage.
Okay, with respect to your neighbors on either side of the property, I understand one side is wooded, how about the other side?
The other side belongs to this lady here, it's not wooded, it's open, but it is, my house sets back about twice as far off of the main road as hers does. So there's really probably a chance she might be able to see it out of her back door, but not much, I don't think.
All right.
There's a lot of trees in between.
So you're indicating, and I understand that the garage is behind the existing house, correct?
Correct.
And are you going to be able to see the garage when it's constructed?
If you look straight back from the road there, probably not as far as I can see.
Is the structure going to exceed the height of the existing house in that view there?
It may, but the backyard, the house is slightly elevated on the property from the rest of it because it is also a fairly damp area. Yeah, very clay soil there.
Do you have any idea how far the property grades down from your home?
Um, oh, the home is actually just kind of built up around the home itself, and then the yard is all pretty much a consistent level.
Okay, so it's flat from behind there, and what's the height of the, is that, that's a single-story home?
Yes.
Okay, so it's likely that the garage will be visible if you're looking for.
They're going to be about the same height.
Okay.
I think that the 25-foot is a little bit over what it's really going to be. Imagining with a 12-foot wall and 11-foot truss, we're probably closer to 23 feet on an overall, which is about what the existing house is now. The existing house sets back about 200 feet, I think, from the road, 180 feet or something I measured. And.
So if we approve the variance for a 23-foot high structure, you would then only need, what, seven-foot variance? Eight-foot variance?
You know, you got somewhere in the thing, there's the trust diagram that shows the attic trust.
I'm going based upon your representation. I'm saying if you really think it's only going to be 23 feet, then you wouldn't need the.
Well, I think tried to get it with the 20, was it 25 it says on there stated?
Yeah, 25.
Recommended by the folks at the building department to go with that.
Okay, and who is doing the construction?
I am.
That kind of makes sense. Are there other members of the board that have any questions?
For the existing home, what's the approximate distance from the existing home, the side of the house to the side of the lot?
About 10 feet.
About 10 feet, and then the proposed garage would be the same distance?
Approximately, yes.
Okay.
Trying to keep that in line with.
Those two would be adjacent.
Property line, correct, and on that side where the variance is, is the wood lot.
Okay, thank you.
And have you spoken, I understand that your neighbor that's most closely impacted here, have any other neighbors spoken to you about the garage?
Um, I have spoken to all of the neighbors and none of them had voiced any concern.
All right, any other members of the board have any questions? It's a fairly substantial structure, I know Mr. Latif would be typically asking about drainage.
I was.
I was a little surprised we haven't got drainage.
In between the two, may I step up and just?
Sure, why don't you describe the microphone? What image?
Okay. Right in between the wood lot here and the property line is a drainage ditch. That drainage ditch has been something that I have maintained for the last 50-plus years, since I could hold a shovel, I imagine, so. The runoff will be into that drainage ditch.
Okay.
If I could have a little help from Schenectady County, they could pitch the culvert that goes under the road in the proper direction so we could get flow towards Lyshekill Creek, which is on the opposite side of the road, but unfortunately, they have pitched that culvert just back towards our properties a little bit, so it has to get to a point before it flows, but.
Getting back to the structure itself, are you going to have any gutters on the structure? Okay, and the structure and the gutters are going to direct the water?
Towards the drainage ditch.
To the drainage ditch, okay, and the drainage ditch, as you indicated, flows to the front of the property?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other members of the board that have questions?
Yeah, adding to with this question, explaining the drainage. Can you again tell us why you need it at 25 feet high? I know can you pitch the roof a little less?
Well, I was trying to get, I'm putting an attic trust in there so I can have storage above for woodworking purposes, that way I can get product that can be, you know, cured for a couple of years before I use it and have enough space to store.
So you're going to have some kind of stairs to go?
Yes, yes.
And are you going to have electric in that garage?
Yes, sir.
Going back to the drainage. Your gutter is going to be directed to?
Towards, towards back.
Lyshekill?
Right, well, the drainage ditch naturally flows towards the road.
Okay. And there's no complaint right now for any neighbors or anything?
Nope, I've contacted all of them around my house there, and other than, you know, way in the back, I don't know any of the people that live in the development behind me, but they're approximately, I'm going to guess, over 500 feet away from where the garage is going to be.
500 feet?
The lot is 980-something feet deep, I believe.
Thank you.
Any other members of the board have questions? Is there any member of the public that wishes to be heard for or against the application? May we come forward and state your name? Mr. McClemmons, you could have a seat.
Yes, my name is Linda Gardner, and I live next door to Pete, 786 Lyshekill Road.
Okay, Ms. Gardner, what do you have, what's your position?
No problem at all with him building the garage behind the house. As he said, I wouldn't see much of it unless I'm outside, and even that, it just, it wouldn't bother me at all. I've been in the house, my house, for 53 years, and when we moved in, his parents were there, and Pete, I think, was like seven years old, so. No, I don't, in fact, I, you know, I'm glad he's, you know, improving the land and, you know, doing something with it.
How was Pete as a kid? Is he a good kid?
No, he was, yeah, he, you know, he played with my kids and, you know, it was nice neighbors.
I appreciate your input. Anything else you have to offer?
I don't know, no, Pete, and he's very helpful to me. I lost my husband five years ago, and if I have a problem, I know I can give Pete a call and he'll come and help me work it out. So, and he also put, he also put my new windows in and he fixed my back steps, which were concrete, but he put a nice wooden little deck on the back for the dog. So, yeah, no, he's been very, very helpful. And I anticipate, once he actually moves in, he'll even be more helpful.
Okay, well, I thank you, Ms. Gardner, for coming out tonight. I appreciate the feedback that you've offered, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody on the board have any questions for Ms. Gardner? No. Okay, sir, if you want to come forward, state your name and address to the record, please.
Good evening, my name's Jeff Dutcher, I live at 818 Lyshekill Road. I am the property that abuts Peter's property to the north, and I am fully in favor of his application as it is submitted. I have no problem with the setback, I am the property that 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 would be most affecting, I have no difficulty with it, and he's a great neighbor and I'm excited to have him moving in.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other members of the public who wish to be heard for or against this application? Having heard no other members, is there any follow-up questions for Mr. McClemmons? No, is there any member of the board that wishes to make a motion for or against the application? I will, I'll give Mr. Dolman a break here. I will move to approve the application, and I understand the benefit that the applicant is seeking to achieve, it's a fairly unique benefit. And I appreciate that the only way that he can accomplish everything that he's looking to accomplish in terms of moving into this property and also maintaining his business is facilitated by the construction of the garage as large as it is. It's also being placed on a unique property that is very deep, and because of the depth of the property, that mitigates many of the issues that would typically arise from the construction of a structure this large. So based upon that, and the unique structure, and how far it's set back from the road, and the size of the neighboring parcels and the location of the structures on those parcels, I don't think it will, in this unique circumstance, present an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The two most closely affected neighbors are in fact here and are in full support of the project. The variance is as substantial as they get, but that in and of itself isn't determinative. I don't believe that there'll be physical or environmental effects on the neighborhood or the district, largely because of the size of the parcel and the contemplated water mitigation efforts. I don't think that there's going to be any negative physical or environmental effects. Is the difficulty self-created? Yes, this, like most applications, is self-created to a certain extent, but not more so than the average application, and in any event, that variable isn't necessarily determinative in an application. So for all those reasons, I move to approve the variance, variances. Uh, motions have been made, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman. I've been in construction for 38 years, and this is relatively well-done, trust me. It's very easy read. This is a piece of work you designed, I mean it is. And for all the reasons stated, I definitely would approve.
A motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Having heard no discussion, Mr. Kay, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daley?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Stein?
I'm going to vote yes for the reasons stated. I think a large part in this, as Chairman Hope said, is that the uniqueness of the property and the depth definitely is a benefit that leans your way. Thank you.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated. Your application's been granted, sir. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Mr. Kay, we call the last matter on the agenda this evening.
Appeal by QC Industries, agent for a variance from Section 220-18B3B and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 29 Bergen Place, Niskuna, New York, located in the R3 High Density Residential Zoning District, to construct an in-ground pool partially within the rear yard setback. Section 220-18B3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building. As defined, major accessory structures are detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The pool at 480 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IC establishes a rear setback minimum of 20 feet. As proposed, the pool will be located 15 feet from the rear property line, therefore a 5-foot rear yard setback variance is required. 11 notices were mailed, zero responses.
Thank you, sir, you state your name and address to the record, please.
Christopher Quinn, QC Industries LLC, 2370 Curry Road, number 503, Schenectady, New York, 12303.
Sir, you wish to proceed this evening?
I do, sir.
Okay, and I just, just to summarize my understanding of the application and your need for the variance, the diagram that's currently being displayed here shows the property boundary lines. i- i- the diagram that's currently being displayed here shows um the property boundary lines um from roughly the center of the pool, you do meet or come close to the twenty foot setback. But because of the nature of how the the parcel uh is tapered, um, the edges of the pool, then um come closer to the property boundary, necessitating the need for the variance, is that is that is?
That's exactly right, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we're in a difficult position because the um the way the developers set up the property line, well, I suppose um the 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 rear, it's most important to mention that the uh the rear neighbor is national grid, those are the power lines. And because of the way the lines take an angle there, this is the one property that has, instead of a flat um line parallel to the back of the house, it's got this um this split line. Uh, let me, let me pick up a microphone and and go to the diagram. Hi, Linda. Um. Initially, we didn't realize that we were pushing this twenty foot boundary at all because I was uh measuring from the uh nearly the the furthest point. And then when we realized that it was tight, as pointed out by the building department, um, we thought that we could cite um uh the rule where um the average distance is is what um governs, but that's actually limited to the side yard. That's not applicable um to the rear property line a- as I understand it. So it's just a small variance. We're we're a little tight here, we're a little tight here, we're okay here. And then I tried shimmying it left, I tried shimmying it right to no avail. The the goal in every house where we build a pool is um for proper visibility from the kitchen and back windows, um, say a parent is are supervising the children and they they need to go back in the house, the phone rings or, you know, something's burning, you know, they need to be able to have full visibility of the pool. So if we if we move it too far out of the way, it's really detrimental. Um, but I tried, you know, with construction paper to make the to scale it and and make the whole thing work in another fashion, and it's just not possible.
Sir, sir, what is this structure? Is there a structure to the right, like really?
This, this is part of our initial concept drawing. Uh, we may seek approval for this structure in a subsequent meeting a month from now. Um, because that is a um a a proposed um you know, little pergola structure, but it's not on this application. We're not seeking uh approval for that tonight.
Okay, now what, why are we doing it piecemeal?
Uh, budget and we're just um getting um the pool in the ground uh potentially and the patio and then we will, if we if we want to proceed with this, if the if the owner wants to proceed with this, we'll seek your approval.
And why can't the pool be shifted closer to the house and was that a deck or patio that made it a little smaller?
The deck is existing and it's quite large and um I'm very much against uh crowding the staircase with the edge of the swim pool because um, you know, if you're a parent, you have a couple of toddlers in your arms or some food or drinks. If you trip on these stairs and wind up headfirst into the pool, it's very uh detrimental. So eight foot um is the goal.
And behind the structure, it's national grid, there's no uh how close is the closest neighbor behind the?
All you have is left and right. There's no neighbors behind within view. There's a national grid. It's quite a large uh easement there, um, say more than a hundred feet across and then behind is woods, uh slated for future development, but at the at this time, no permits are are in existence.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions. Any members of the board have any questions?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm I might have missed it. You, did you say the power lines are coming across the pool?
No, no, they're back, they're back here where my arm is. Uh, transmission lines, they're not local.
Your transmission line?
Yeah.
Um, what considerations were given to reducing the size of the pool?
Um. The pool is not a custom-made pool. The pool is a fiberglass um insert, so we dig a hole in the ground and then put that in. So there, there's no adjustability to the pool.
Are there smaller sizes?
There are, but um it goes, this pool is um thirty two feet by um fifteen six and the next size down is um twelve feet in width, but it goes all the way down to twenty six feet. And with the design of the pools today, they have a large tanning ledge in the in the shallow end and the the swimming area is uh significantly reduced. Both neighbors on left and right um have have expressed approval. Uh, nobody responded to the to the official mail and then um national grid, I I I don't speak for the building department or the board, but I don't care too much what they think.
So with respect to you indicated the neighbor on the left and the right, um, indicated their approval and then you followed that up by saying they didn't respond by the notice that they received.
Yeah.
Did you affirmatively speak with them and know that they affirmatively approved it, or you're just assuming that because they didn't?
No.
Any opposition?
The conversation was not had by me, but um by my client who's here tonight, uh, Mr. Jan Klassen. Uh, so he spoke with both neighbors and uh they they're both in strong support.
Okay, well, if you, if the uh, if the homeowner could come forward and just state that for the record, I'd like to have that on the record if you wouldn't mind. So your name and address for the?
Jan Klassen, twenty nine Bergen Place, Niskuna.
Okay, and you've spoken to the neighbors on the left and the right?
I did.
Okay, and what did they tell you?
They are in uh, you know, they they support my my pool bill.
Okay, thank you, sir. You have anything else to say about the application?
No, I do not.
All right, are there any other members of the board that have any questions?
Okay, Mr. Hope, you know what I'm gonna ask. So. Now that's a little bit, but I know I have a pool myself and I have to, you know, uh once in a while drain it or backwash it, take water out of it. So tell us, because you have neighbors on both sides, you have national grid in the back. What's the plan for the pool drainage and uh I know fiberglass, they last longer than liners, that's the new way to go. And uh, where's the pump? Where's all this contraptions for the pool?
Yeah, the um, the pump is gonna be up uh to the side of the house so that it's easier for us to grab the um gas and electric. Um, and then uh drainage should be carried forward. Uh, on this side of the property, there's a culvert with stone as provided by the developer and then improved by the owner, which runs down to the street. The street is at a much lower elevation, um, say three or four feet. And then we have the uh storm drains in the in the street. Uh, so the method would be to extend the temporary hose uh into that um side culvert and uh drain that way. In the back, it's it's moist and uh there is a um l- l- like a makeshift culvert in 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 the power lines that could be used in an emergency, but uh the preference would be this is all filled with river rock. It's it's set up for for that.
Okay, this setup for drainage?
Yes.
Okay. But there is a spot in the back, if they need to, they can drain it safely.
That's right, and this area is, this area is wet, so um part of the uh setting these pools up for success in at this latitude is um not backfilling with any uh soil whatsoever. So we we do a uh a limited overdig about two feet outside of the perimeter of the pool and we we backfill with um clean washed bluestone gravel. So there's a lot of open capacity in the backfill and by that, um any snow melt or other water that may collect drain to the bottom of the excavation, which is deeper than the frost line.
And these pools, I mean, I know it's nothing to do with the variance, are they uh like salt or GE or?
Salt water, uh, with a sand filtration system. But instead of sand, um, inside the drum, we use uh glass beads, which can actually filter to one-third the micron size of of sand. So it's a nice little system. Uh, we put salt in um standard in our in our installations because it um it's healthier uh for everybody. Um, it's, you know, it's um, it's easier to maintain. It's quite a bit cheaper to maintain. Uh, you just salt, you put like a pool this size would take eight forty pound bags of salt just dumped in and stirred into the pool water, then you keep a few bags on hand. Um, the system will let you know with a red LED when it wants more salt. But it's super inexpensive. It's about eight dollars a bag where a full um bucket of chlorine today is about seven hundred dollars.
And 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 since you mentioned it, it's good to learn about it. So this kind of uh salt water, when you drain it, is it, how is it for the environment?
Oh, it's not not heavily salinated, like um even to your taste, it wouldn't taste salty.
Okay.
Ever so slightly you can taste it, but um salt um is, the salt water is electrified in a cell at the pump station and salt being um NACL on the periodic table, this um electrolysis um frees up some CL to lightly chlorinate the water and that's the way that we get it to work, but it's no longer the uh sore eyes or um any changes to uh hair color or, you know, wear and tear on swimsuits, but it's healthier on the body. It's it's a beautiful system.
One more question.
Hmm.
Uh, I know you mentioned, uh, I think Mr. Hope asked you that one. Um, now, the fiberglass pool, they don't make them anymore in kidney shape or in any of those shape because it looks like to me, the way this is set up in the middle, uh, you meet the distance, but in the side, so if you were to have a kidney uh pool, that will be new, giving you uh the footage that you're looking for.
It would, but then the um, my client's wife would uh would try to murder him and I both because it's an Instagram world today and the the goal here is a big rectangular pool that should look like a
It's.
Like a hotel, South Beach Hotel.
I was just curious if they make the kidney fiberglass.
They do, they do, but they're they're somewhat out of vogue. Um, maybe one time in five, I'll get that request today. People are envisioning a a rectangle pool with the stone coping and they want to see those clean lines. That's that's what's in style.
So if if the situation, just curiosity, if if you were demanding the, assuming we had a neighbor behind you who was like uh beside the national grid that you talked about, uh, if the neighbor was concerned and so on, would a kidney pool uh met the qualification of not needing a variance? I'm just curious.
Potentially, but um it would miss on other criteria, um such as the the depth of the deep end, the um about just over a third of this pool is tanning ledge at just fourteen inches deep, so that would be lost in the in the kidney shape. The ki- every um pool shape requires a a mold, so it's a, it's a negative and then the fiberglass is laid onto it. It's hand waxed and then fiberglass laid onto it, so each mold, and I have some background in the speedboat industry as well, each mold is about a hundred thousand dollars to produce. So it's a very careful selection on what molds can be developed, you know, uh season by season. And so those kidney ones go back to an earlier time where there was just a shallow end and a deep end, some wedding cake stairs and that's it. And they're, we're not gonna see those updated for quite some time because that's um yesterday's news pretty much, style-wise.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the board that have any question? We're having heard none or any members of the public that wish to be heard or against this application. Having heard no members of the public that wish to be heard for or against this application, is there anybody that'd like to make a motion um relative to this application?
Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the variances as written. Um, I I under understood the gentleman gave a very good presentation that uh they attempted to to uh establish a pool here by other means that were not feasible. Um, it doesn't, it will not change the character of the neighborhood. In fact, probably no one will even see it. Um, while substant- I substantial, I kind of go back and forth. It it it's not significant, especially given the neighbor, uh, the neighbor most affected is national grid. Um, it will not have any adverse or physical effects as you uh stated. Um, and although self-created, uh, I think on the balance, um, I I would be in favor of approving this motion.
Thank you. A motion's been made. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman, for all the reasons stated and very well laid out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
A motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Having heard no discussion, Mr. Kenny, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna vote yes and uh congratulate the applicant. You're gonna go home and be okay.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Stein?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Chairperson Hope?
Yes, um, I am still somewhat skeptical that you're gonna be able to effectively recreate South Beach in this case, but the best of luck with that, sir.
Send you an invitation by mail once we do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for seeing us tonight, uh, members of the board. We appreciate it very much. Good presentation. Thank you, sir.
Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?